Let's pray. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for each person who's here. Thank you, God, for allowing us to represent our county. Pray, Lord, that you would richly bless each and every citizen. Lord, that you just would look down upon those, dear God, who have lost loved ones and comfort their hearts as only you can do. Be with those that are sick, dear God. We pray that your will be done in each heart and each life. Thank you again for allowing us to serve our fellow men. Therefore, we're serving you. Thank you for all the blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And I'll call on the orders. Swain County Commissioners Regular Session, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, five thirty. Go.
Face the colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Is there any adjustment to the agenda? The administrative reports. First up is the tax collector's report.
About two minor little adjustments. One of them is going to be on the total receivables to date. That's going to be seven million, eight hundred, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred, seventy-four dollars and fourteen cents. The percent of budget tax collected this year is ninety-three point six four. The waste fee for this month has been thirty-three thousand, six hundred, seventy-four and a penny. The total monthly collected for motor vehicles is forty thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty cents. This is the second correction. It's going to be other total monthly collections. That's going to be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred, thirteen dollars and eleven cents. The total amount of add valorem tax collected year-to-date is six million, two hundred, seventeen thousand, three hundred, sixty-five dollars and eighteen cents. The waste fee is going to be a million, seventy-three, eight hundred, forty-two, seventeen. And the year-to-date for county vehicle taxes is going to be three hundred and two thousand, eight hundred, eighty-nine, forty-one.
Anybody got any questions, comments? So we're looking pretty good on taxes right now, Ms. Norris?
Yes. Looking fairly good. And I have, we have went over some delinquent tax, we did a delinquent tax report last week. And we found, to find past due taxes, typically the way that we find them is bills are returned. The addresses are incorrect, and so bills are returned back to us. Otherwise, they just sort of sit there until you run a report and you look for them. And we ran a report last Friday, and Kim Dalsie and I have started sending out delinquent tax bills. We sent out twenty-three today that have got several years owing in taxes. We have got currently twenty-three different properties that are in foreclosure. So we have several people that are, that as soon as the addresses are corrected, they come in and they pay, you know, everything up. We had two people today that came in and paid a substantial amount of taxes of year-to-date. So it's looking good.
Awesome.
Awesome. How many foreclosures?
Twenty-three. And if you like a list of those, I have those in my office.
I would definitely like a list. I mean, is it? Can we elaborate somewhat on it? Like, is it?
I can tell you by the time something reaches foreclosure, they have four or more years of delinquent taxes. Generally speaking, they have received anywhere from four to seven letters. The new policy, when Ms. Peggy went out, when I came in, the way that I do it now is if I find, when we ran the report and we found that you owed at four years or more taxes, I send you a letter stating that you have ten days to come in and enter into a payment, to make a substantial payment and come into and make a payment agreement with us. And at the end of that ten days, if I haven't received any, if the address is bad, it comes back to us at the end of that ten days and just turned over to the county attorney for foreclosure. But typically speaking, you get a letter stating, hey, we ran some reports. We noticed that you're three years behind on your taxes. We'd like for you to come in and enter into a payment agreement with us. You know, a reasonable payment agreement with us. And then typically another letter is sent, then a thirty-day letter is sent, then a ten-day letter is sent, and then you get a letter from the attorney stating that it's going to go in foreclosure. So it's not like this wasn't something that just flipped overnight. We've sent multiple letters. A lot of times, being from a small town has its advantages. If I know that Kevin's niece owes, and her stuff keeps coming back to me, I will send a letter to a family member, a family member, to let that be given to the taxpayer. So it's not something that's just, it's not something that we just flipped into overnight. But if you'd like a copy of that list, it is available in the office. And I do believe it's on the county website as soon as they become available for auction.
Which I think, we went through issues with this before. I didn't know it's four years. It used to be, we used to be eight or ten, somewhere in there.
You can hold on to it for ten years. After that, it lapses. So if you don't do anything with it, that is continued going off. So that's the ten-year mark. But we've been more, you know, working with the taxpayer, trying to get them on a payment plan to where it's not as cumbersome, because you start adding up ten years. That's a lot of.
To catch it.
That's a big number.
It's a lot of penalty that we can't waive. I mean, it's in the general statute, so.
My goal is to take care of all the two thousand and thirteen, so we don't lose anything when they fall off in September. If you, anybody who makes a reasonable attempt, a consistent reasonable attempt, I'm not gonna, I don't want it. You know, I want an attempt. I just don't want you hanging out going, hey, in at ten years, my taxes fall off.
And one thing, one of the issues we had before was a man said he never got the letters. And that was one thing, and I wanted to try to clear up. Back then, we talked about maybe serving a certified letter to make sure they at least send them. Did we do that at all?
If we try to do a certified letter, the only address that I have to send that to is the one that is on your tax bill. And so usually with Jonathan, who's the county attorney that handles these, they do a very in-depth search. I have, there are several different avenues that I use to try to find the correct address. We have a website that we use that, and it even gives relatives, non-relatives, that you may be able to send that letter to. But there's, there are several letters that are sent. I would not, sometimes people don't know. They've had their escrow paid or bills, and then their house was paid off. And they're used to getting, you get the bill, even if your escrow pays it, and they just don't realize it. You know, they kind of look at it and go, oh, well, that's taken care of, and it kind of goes by. But there are multiple letters that are sent.
I just wanted to make sure, because I know we don't want to. That's a pretty big number.
It's a very large number.
To me. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the report and give it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Past United States. Next, Finance Officer's Report.
Good evening. This is for March twenty-three. General Fund, total revenues year-to-, excuse me, for the month, one million, seven hundred, thirteen thousand, sixty dollars and sixty-six cents. Total revenues year-to-date, fifteen million, six hundred, forty-two thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Percentage of revenues year-to-date, thirty-eight point forty-nine percent. Total expenditures for the month, one million, six hundred, twenty-three thousand, forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Total expenditures year-to-date, fourteen million, six hundred, eighty-six thousand, one hundred, sixty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. For percentages of expenditures paid year-to-date, forty-two point five percent. With the current year surplus of nine hundred, fifty-six thousand, four hundred, eighty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Solid waste funds, total revenues year-to-date, one million, three hundred, thirty-three thousand, five hundred, thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Total expenditures year-to-date, one million, one hundred, twenty thousand, five hundred, fifty-four dollars and fifteen cents, with the current year surplus of two hundred, twelve dollars, two hundred, twelve thousand dollars, nine hundred, eighty-two, thirty-five. With total social services fund, total revenue year-to-date, two million, two hundred, seventy-nine thousand, five hundred, ninety-four cents. Total expenditures year-to-date, three million, three hundred, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred, seventy dollars and twenty-four cents, with the current year deficit of one million, fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred, sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Total revenues year-to-date for the Health Department, one million, one hundred, eighty-six thousand, two hundred, ninety-four dollars and forty cents. Total expenditures year-to-date, one million, two hundred, sixty-five thousand, three hundred, nine dollars and five cents, with the current year deficit, deficit of seventy-nine thousand, fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody got any questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Totally approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Past United States. Thank you so much. Next up is public comments. And we have Mr. Carver-Hollow. You have three minutes, sir. You have three minutes.
I was going to just say something pertaining to that. Who were the two new members of the board? You have one?
Pardon me? I'm sorry, what's the question?
Back.
Yeah. I just want to know the two members of the board, didn't you mean?
Okay. Because of the history of what I want to say, I was going to ask special permission if you would grant me a little beyond the three minutes.
That's up to the board, I guess. How much more time? Yeah, how much more time we talk?
Well, I was going to bring back history a little bit of my coming here, what has taken place, and now what needs to be taking place. So it's like three sides.
Make the call, Mr. Chair.
You guys all right with that?
It depends on if the next person wants a whole lot longer or not. We're going to have to accommodate.
Why do I take this time?
How about this? We'll give you six minutes. That's twice, that's twice the amount of time you would normally get.
I'll try to move as fast as I can to give history, especially to those that have not sat here before. Oh, three or four years ago, I came and said, asked the question about the road to nowhere and the money coming from it, from the state. How much were we getting? Kevin told me that it was about one million dollars. And I said, fine, what are we paying toward expenses that that money needs to go to? He said, none, at this time. So I finally said, fine, then we can take that one million dollars. We can build the animal shelter, and we can stock it. We'll have a little leftover that we can put into an account that will go toward the payment of people's salaries. And over the next three or four years, take the one million dollars, put it into that account, and then we'd have enough money to pay about four people. The rest of the people would all be volunteers coming in. That was my suggestion. The question, is the animal shelter up and running? No. Of course it isn't. Of course, my suggestion was not taken. I'm coming before you today because in the fall of the year, it was before the two new members came on the board, of a problem that we have in Swain County. It's called kudzu. I live on North Carolina twenty-eighth South. I had to go to a doctor every three weeks down in Franklin. So I proceeded in June, July, and August, when the kudzu grows and is really green. And I was astounded at what I saw as I drove south from my place, that the kudzu was growing over the hills and going further. It was going up abandoned homes, and it was going up actually homes that were lived in. There was one I looked at, and I said, my God, that's an active home. And sure enough, the door opened, a man walked out to his car, and the woman came to the door and stood there. Well, three weeks later, I had looked at that home and beautiful green grass. No kudzu growing up the side of the building of their house. Someone had either come in and worked for them, or they themselves had gotten rid of the kudzu and pulled up all the vines. Now, I've been fighting kudzu for fifty years. And this is going to be the first year I'm going to have to ask someone, hire someone to do it for me, to spray a field that I have. Because about three or four years ago, I thought I had things under control, and it had taken over by the kudzu. So what I'm saying to all of you is a suggestion of how to annihilate the kudzu is to hire college students who are trying to pay off their college bills. They're available at the end of May. They're available in June, July, and the beginning of August, just the time when the kudzu is putting out its energy to put out their leaves. Now, if anybody knows a kudzu plant, if you ever see it the first year it's growing, you wouldn't recognize it. But the second year, all of a sudden, here come the vines, and here come the leaves, growing up. And that's the time it was grown. Well, I kept going south into Macon County, and Macon County was beautiful. No kudzu whatsoever. And I thought, well, maybe Macon County never had kudzu in the first place. We little ones that had kudzu. And I found out that, no, Macon County did have kudzu. They got rid of it, but we have not, and it is taking over people's properties. And I think it's now time for us to do something with the money that we have and that road to nowhere, if we're not using it right presently to pay off debts, is to hire maybe the college students to come in who could work the last week of May, June, July, and then maybe the first week of August. They could come in and be our annihilators of the kudzu for us. And we could pay them because they need to pay for their college. It's just a suggestion, like I did with the one million, to build the animal shelter. But that wasn't taken. You people may come up with a different idea of how to do it. But the point is this. This is like a ten-year job. Five years to annihilate the kudzu, and five years to keep an inspection going throughout the county to make sure the kudzu doesn't grow. Because the first-year kudzu plant doesn't even look like the old one, the one that puts out the vines and leaves. It's totally different. So you could easily walk by it, thinking it was another type of plant, and you went by a kudzu that the following year would put out. So we need to annihilate the kudzu in Swain County. I've been fighting it for fifty years, and I'm not going to fight it anymore. I've had enough. But it's going to be annihilated and gotten rid of, and we need to do something about it. The college students were my suggestion because they're looking for a tenant. We jobbing, it's a perfect one for the time kudzu is growing. But you may come up with a better suggestion. So that's the suggestion that I made in the fall of the year, and I'm bringing it to your attention again because I knew we had two, at least two new members on the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
But thank you for the time.
Thank you. Ms. Ginny Leo? Leo.
I did not realize that it was only three minutes to sit up here in order to explain everything that I have spent my last thirty years researching. It would take a very long time. So what I'd like to do is read this public notice that was issued by Alaska State Trooper Superior Court, Alaska State Superior Court Judge Anna Marie Reitzinger, if that's okay. This is a public notice to law enforcement, sheriffs, elected officials, and bar association members. It was dated April fifth, two thousand and fifteen. Take notes. The Roman Curia created the concept of legal fictions, trusts, foundations, and other corporations for good reasons. However, legal fictions can be misused. By maximum of law, those who create are responsible for their creations. It follows that Roman Curia is responsible for the proper function of all corporations worldwide. As of September first, two thousand and thirteen, Pope Francis declared all corporations and corporate officers fully liable for their errors and omissions. This means you. Also, by maximum of law, there is no statute of limitation on fraud. Privately-owned governmental services corporations have been fraudently passing themselves off as the government of the United States since eighteen sixty-two. The longevity of this fraud is in no way, imbues it with authority. As an employee of these corporations, you have no public office, and no public bond, and no foreign state immunity. Federal law enforcement personnel, except U.S. Marshals, your status is that of a mall cop acting outside the mall. You have no authority on the land jurisdiction of the continental United States. You are acting under color of law when addressing citizens of the continental United States, as if they were citizens of the federal United States. If you threaten any living inhabitant on the continental United States with a gun, taser, or other weapon, you can be hung as an inland pirate. If you remove any livestock, you can be hung as a cattle rustler. If you cause any harm, you can be sued without limit. If you wear any uniform or display any badge, or use any name or office designed to deceive or project authority you do not have, you can be arrested for impersonating an officer. You are acting in a purely private capacity and have only equal civil rights that may be withdrawn at any time. You are also acting under martial law and may face extreme punishment for infractions against the civil populace, acts of plunder, mortal violence, and mischaracterization of civilians as combatants are all death penalty offenses. U.S. Marshals are allowed full egress within the continental United States so long as they are sworn and acting as officers sworn to uphold the actual Constitution. There are four of them. And they are not acting deceptively nor acting outside the international jurisdiction while in pursuit of their duty protecting the U.S. mail. Lawyers, judges, court clerks, when you address birthright citizens of the continental United States in the foreign jurisdiction of the federal United States or that of a federal state, and deliberately confuse living people with corporate franchises merely named after them, you commit personage. This results in press gaining land assets into the international jurisdiction of the sea, a crime outlawed worldwide for two hundred years. It is a recognized act of inland piracy, and it carries the death penalty. Mischaracterizing the identity or citizenship status of a birthright citizen of the continental United States is also a crime under the Geneva Protocols of nineteen forty-nine, Volume Two, Article Three. It also carries the death penalty. Finally, no member of the bar association may sit upon the bench of any public court nor occupy any public office of the continental United States, including Congress. The involvement of any bar member automatically voids all proceedings pretending subject matter jurisdiction related to the actual land or its assets, including the people of the continental United States. The titles of nobility amendment adopted and ratified prior to the American Civil War has not been repealed. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but most of Congress are bar associate attorneys. The federal United States and the municipality of Washington, DC all operate under the auspices of the United Nations and are signatories of the universal right of self-declaration. This is what I am doing, is self-declaration. I have the right, my God-given right, to self-declare that I am an American state national, and I do not belong in this maritime law scenario. Anyone claiming to be a citizen of the continental United States having a valid birth certificate must be treated as such. Any debts or charges whatsoever related to vessels in commerce operated under his or her name by the federal United States, any federal state, the Washington, DC municipality, or the United Nations must be discharged according to maximum of law already cited. You are responsible for what you create. The federal United States and its federal states have created numerous vessels in commerce merely named after living citizens, is what I was telling you about, of the continental United States and styled in the form John Quincy Adams. The Washington, DC municipality has similarly indulged in this practice and created franchises for itself named after living citizens of the continental United States, styled in the form John Quincy Adams, all caps letters. If you guys know anything about all caps letters, those are only reserved for dead people. That's the only time you're supposed to use all caps letters. The organizations that have created these franchises are completely one hundred percent liable for their debts and obligations without exception and without recourse to claim upon the living people these franchises are named after. You may not presume that living people have consensually agreed to be subjected to statutory law. You may not presume that they consensually agree to be obligated for the debts of any legal fiction personas which have been created and named after them by third parties secretly operating in a private capacity and merely claiming to represent the victims of this fraud. This is your due notice that the living people inhabiting the continental United States are presenting themselves and may not be addressed as if they belong to, are responsible for, or indebted in behalf of any legal fiction personas operated under their given names by any international corporation. Any continuance of any such claims and repugnant practices will be deemed immediately the immediate cause to liquidate the American Bar Association as a criminal syndicate and to deport its members from our shores. International action is underway to secure the assets and credit owed to the victims. Please read, research, and do your own due diligence. You are fully responsible for obeying the public law of the continental United States, including revised Statute twenty-one sixty-five and the Constitution. Please respect the established jurisdiction of the air, land, and sea, and be aware that you may be arrested and fined or worse for failure to do so. Issued this fifth day of April, two thousand and fifteen, Judge Anna Marie Reitzinger, Alaska State Superior Court. It was also sent to Pope Francis and his apostolic crew. I also have here in the International Court of Justice, this has already been through the system. This is dated March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, protest and demand for permanent injunctive relief. We have all been, had the wool pulled over our eyes. Each and every one of us in here, a glass of birth certificate has a bond that was created in their name. That bond was then traded on the stock market because they consider us chattel, we're cattle. Okay? That, that bond is in perpetuity, just keeps on going, on and on and on and on. What I am trying to do today, I have a foreclosure proceeding. I have noticed the service provider way in advance to give me proof that they own my loan. They need to provide me with the wet ink signature of my note. They have yet to be able to do this. This was almost a year ago. Okay, now the proceedings are here in the court. I've provided this information to the clerk of court on the first day. The second day, she allowed me to bring in my evidence of all this. And she rescheduled the hearing for May first. Okay, aside from all of that, I challenge the jurisdiction of the court. Okay? What that means is that you just heard there's jurisdiction of the air, jurisdiction of the land, and jurisdiction of the sea. Right now, all these courts across America are running in the jurisdiction of the sea. Hence, the yellow fringe on your flag, that declares that you are in maritime law. You're in the jurisdiction of the sea. I am not part of that. Therefore, those statutes, those rules, those regulations do not apply to me. Okay, and I challenge the jurisdiction of the court. They never responded, which means that that first hearing that day should have been null and void. They never responded, which means that that first hearing that day should have been null and void. You cannot have jurisdiction. You cannot take over the case and rule on a case that you do not have jurisdiction for. Does that make sense? Or did I lose you all?
We're lost.
I know, it's hard to, in three minutes, you can't just give it all. You know, I'm doing the best I can. She had a great outline and I tried to provide you with that. But I really need support. I tried talking to Sheriff Curtis Cochran. I went and I spoke with him for an hour and his deputy, Andrew, explaining the situation with the houses. Maybe this'll make sense. Can I have a little more time?
I think I get to, it's sovereign citizency.
Yeah.
Sovereign citizency.
I know what you're talking about.
And so, it's, I mean, you can see this wherever you want.
Let me.
How long has it been now, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
We are kind of sitting in a present.
Yeah. Wouldn't you leave us your information? Leave us your contact info.
Okay, I got that on the sheet.
The county manager, and then, we have any questions, or we can, maybe you can reach out email as well to us.
I have nobody responds.
Okay.
I've sent you guys notice by a planet potentially post court judge, Mark Heshon Christopher, to four of you. And it was a judicial notice, which I think you should check your emails and look that over. And then, a new global constitution. There's two documents. Judicial notice was that of explaining what Black's Law Dictionary says these words are and why we are so confused all the time. Because when they're writing these contracts, they're using words that we were taught one meaning for, but in maritime law, they mean something completely different. So check your emails for those documents, read through them please, and, you know, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. If you'll just give your information, whatever you like to give, county manager.
Are you giving it to you, or on the sheet out there?
Go on.
Huh? Yeah, that sheet. Do I have to give more, or is that?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Next up is voting items. And we have the minutes from March the twenty-first, regular session, April fourth work session, Board of Education, April fourth work session.
I make motion we accept the minutes altogether.
Any discussion? Not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. Next, item B, we have the Smoky Mountain Rudder Girl's request.
They withdrew their request.
They withdrew their request, yeah, okay. And it moves us to item C, the Homestead Exemption Resolution.
Y'all kind of had asked me to put this back on the agenda to talk about again. What, you know, it's at your pleasure if you, you know, if you want to vote on it, that's fine. If you're, go back to the work session, it's fine, or, it's getting closer to the middle of the session though, so if you're gonna do it, you know, probably need to get it to Raleigh as ASAP.
Yeah, ready, it's good.
I hope we can get it for our people, I really do.
Yeah, I've talked to several people about it. Several people's asked me questions about it, that heard that we were looking into. Then I had some other counties contacting me as well, that they were kind of looking into it as well, so. What do you guys want to do? You want to go ahead and adopt this resolution?
I think so.
So if this goes through, Mr. Chairman, it takes fortitude then of the commissioners to raise taxes to lower the taxes, right?
Can I do one now?
You have to raise taxes to lower them. Does that make sense, in other words?
You have to, you have to make it equal. You have to raise it on one end and let loads of it lower on the other.
You have to raise taxes on everybody and then cut taxes on the first property owners. Or it doesn't work, right?
That's to keep, that's to keep the revenues the same. Because if you get, if you get a deduction, you're gonna have to come up with that somehow. So, yeah, you're right, I mean, it's gotta be, it's a double incentive.
If you just cut taxes in half of all local residents and we don't have enough revenue, so what you have to do is raise taxes and then lower on everybody and then lower them on local.
The local people don't pay any extra, but the people that are not local pay more. Essentially what you do.
But it is, you're right, it's a twofold process.
Yeah, basically.
But that's just gonna be for one piece of property, the way I read.
Right, like their home property.
Whatever.
Correct.
Or I guess could it be the most valuable you had, or just your home property? Or it's if you owned acres?
It really wouldn't matter. It's whatever your, whatever your primary residence is.
Primary residence.
Yeah, and so if it's fifty thousand, it's around two hundred million total, if you look at it that way. I mean, if, as an organization, it's two hundred million. So you'd have to make up that difference, two hundred million in a rate, to come back, because you're getting two hundred million off. See what I'm saying? So.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Do we have the information of what you'd have to raise it to?
Um, I can get that, hang on.
He's gonna do the math.
I'll do my math right away.
I think it's a very interesting concept. I think it'd be difficult for a lot of people to understand exactly what it is you're doing. You know, but it's an interesting concept.
For sure.
I've had, I've had a couple people that contacted me about this because they saw it in the paper, that we were looking into it, and it was, it was people that are not local, or that don't live here. And they'd be kind of for it. They thought it was a good idea. So.
A little both ways.
Yes.
And two, one more question about the ordinance. If the ordinance passes or whatever, and then we try to get it to our representatives in Raleigh, we don't know whether that'll be initiated. Probably won't be initiated this year. Probably be a year away when you say. So, we're really just sort of gonna be in the dark about it for that year's time, till the next time to readjust the rate and set the budget.
Correct. If it was on the books, so to speak, in Raleigh, then it would be up to this board or future boards to implement it if they chose. It would just be whether you chose to or not. You would have, always have that option to do it.
That's what it's, you can't.
If they were to okay it, then Raleigh, we necessarily wouldn't have to implement it, correct?
No, you don't have to. It'd be a local bill according to Senator Corbin. And so, once the local bill goes into effect, basically it just gives you the authority to do it.
Gives you the authority to do it, whether it gets done or carried through.
Correct.
I think it would be a great thing for, I think it would be a great thing for people.
I agree.
You know?
Even with the adjustment. I do too.
I think it'd be great except for raising taxes. And I'm not willing to raise the taxes unless we have public hearings.
That's the holdback.
You have at least one.
They're ready for you, they're ready for you.
In theory, in theory.
If you have a public hearing, if you have a public hearing and you're raising taxes, you're probably not.
Nobody's gonna raise taxes.
And I get taxes, and I get that. But again, we're looking at this as a business standpoint, how we gonna make it work? How we gonna make it work? And it's, I mean, I just, I'm not one to raise taxes, I'm not for raising taxes. I'm not for raising taxes, but I'm also not going in whole. I'm also not going in whole.
Right now, you get, right now, you get six million, six hundred forty thousand, six hundred forty thousand for first taxation. You know, as far as taxation, for jail control. What this does, what this, we won't get any more than six thousand. I mean, we're not going up in that, we're not going up in collecting, it's just collecting.
Reshifting to people that don't live here.
Reshifting to people that don't live here.
It is reshifting, but another reshifting, valuation, or do some valuation, or do some more shit.
Oh, yeah. Continue shift, continue shift.
Well, I guess I would be in favor of it, just in that it would be a source, that future boards could, that future boards could possibly look at, or look at.
And this may just be a start-up. And this may just be a start-up. Most of you have enough time to get it past the session, or even in the short session. Unless you get on the book, unless you get on the book, and then have some momentum, it still gives you time to look at it.
And some of these values that's in here.
Some of these values that's in here.
Those are arbitrary numbers.
We can change those, we can go up or we can go down, or whatever we.
If it's a local bill, you need to kind of, if it's a local bill, you need to kind of. I mean, I took, see the, see the, Homestead exemption that's currently in place. It's like thirty-two thousand dollars, not if you're over sixty-five years of age. And I think disabled. And you can actually get thirty-two thousand dollar value off your home. There's a billing in the state now where if you're a veteran, they're wanting to give forty-five thousand dollars off your home on taxation. So they're, on taxation.
That's more money.
Those are already set in place, those are already set.
Where's that money? Where's that money? If they do that for veterans, if they do that for veterans, we have to make it up somewhere? We have to make it up somewhere?
That's one of those implications of state. Implications of state.
The way land's selling, the way the vagueness keep getting going. If we passed this, we passed this, reckon how long it would, reckon how long it would take it to catch up. Would we didn't have to raise taxes? Would we didn't have to raise taxes? Even on the people that's not from here, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we get a tax increase every year, we don't even look at, we don't even look at.
They value, they value.
How long would it take it to catch up? It wouldn't take it.
And I'm just looking at that. And I'm just looking at that. And I think when I first started, it was around seven hundred million, seven hundred million, two point one million, two point one. As far as value across, as far as value.
So we're talking, it would take within three years, it would make us that. You said four percent.
Yeah, four cents is not a month, a lot to make up. A lot to make up.
No.
And if we passed this, we could just hang on to it. We would have to, we would have to stay until we let that, until we let that.
No, but we'd always have it as a tool, we'd always have it as a tool, I guess.
No, it's a local bill, it's a local bill if you get it passed, and it's a done deal. Unless it's repealed by your sender, your sender. Represented at some point, represented at some point. Or by the board, well, or by the board. You'd have to ask them to repeal it, you'd have to ask them to repeal it, but it's there, you know, but it's there.
I've got a couple questions. Do you believe the state's gonna stop making this re-bay week?
They have insinuated, they have want us to do a four-year reevaluation. Next one's two thousand and twenty-five. Next one's two thousand and twenty-five. And I basically told, and I basically told April Corbin about, or Rodney, I basically just said, in my opinion, we won't do it, in my opinion, unless we get a letter, asking for it.
Question number two is, did they not, did they not? Contacted immediately after reevaluation and say, we did not evaluate high net.
Yes, they did. Based on the fact, but it was also during that volatile period.
A lot of sales ratios.
All of it goes off of sales, all of it goes off of sales.
Just like if you get a, just like if you get a appraisal.
Except for mass appraisal that they're on, sales ratios that they're on.
The state handled that.
The state handled that. But there's a, and I call, I'm trying to think of it's the, I'm trying to think of it's the coefficient of dispersion. Basically what that means, we're trying to get to zero. And we were like that, and we were like that.
Forty percent.
And you gotta get to zero. And so, that's, that's how, that's the number that they run off of, that they run off of.
Did it adequate, evaluation or not.
And the coordinators, they were not.
Zero, ever.
Zero, ever. That's our problem, that's our problem.
As much as I would like, as much as I would like to have a broke for the local people, I can't vote for a tax either. I would be a teller in a field, basically what this bulls down to, is we're gonna have to raise taxes. Let me just send somebody to paper. And I can't, and I can't.
If I do, I'll be a fielder, if I do, I'll be a fielder.
Ain't gonna be one.
Anybody else come, anybody else come?
Is this done, is this done?
Explain deliberately again, this is, we're asking for Slane County.
For Slane County, our representatives are asking for discount. It's not something that they would pass statewide, counties could opt into.
Normally, the way things work, in Raleigh, a few counties start the process. A lot of times, the association will pick it up and say, yeah, let's make it statewide, make it statewide.
Make everything costum.
The problem is, is that, the problem is that.
The reason we would be looking at it, versus somewhere in the east.
They don't have the same problem with it. They don't have the same problem with it. You know, all their local people are all local. There's no secondary, there's no high market, no high market.
It's crippling, it's crippling, the local people out.
Basically what's happening here, basically what's happening here.
That doesn't happen in the east. That doesn't happen in the east.
They don't have the same problem.
We want relief for our citizens, for the ones that live here permanently.
And we basically want to add that tax burden back on people that's not from here, that's coming in. And buying up the property.
And that's essentially what it is.
And that's essentially what it is. So I don't know if it'd ever go statewide. I doubt it would, be honest with you. I doubt it would, because it's not, because it's not. Eastern counties, they don't have the same problem with it. They don't have the same problem. All the western counties, they have problems.
But they have had them.
They've had them forever.
They have had the same problem, big cities and everything, it's not just, they've had the same issue. They've had the same issue. That's why there's so many communities been gentrified.
I think there's a good chance, I think there's a good chance that west of Asheville, the counties would be interested in this.
You can, you can look at, I mean, you can look at, I mean, they'll go to copy it on the map book. If you look at the map book, and look at the lowest, and look at the lowest state. They're pretty much all gonna be in the west. They're pretty much all gonna be in the west. The values are so much higher. But if you do a really analysis of it, and I've been before.
I did Harrison-Burtie County.
I did Harrison-Burtie County. With a dollar and twelve cents per hundred, and ours is like thirty-six. And ours is like thirty-six. We get the same amount of tax off the same amount of tax, off the same amount of housing.
It's just their, mill rates, it's just their value.
It's so high because their values are low. It's the same, same difference, it's the same, same difference. You know, it's, you know, it's. I don't know, I don't know if it'd give statewide, I don't know if it'd give statewide.
Can we have, can we have?
Hearings on it? Hearings on it?
Yeah.
I mean, even if we don't get it in immediately, we prepare to get it in. Prepare to get it in. To talk to people about it.
If we could hold on to it, if we could hold on to it, there would be some way without raising taxes. A lot of people, it's got homes in Florida, homes here too, there. More resident here than they are away. Stay here, but they keep the residents there.
And that's one reason they do that too. Florida has, Florida has.
They have exemptions.
They have an exemption.
If you have Florida, if you have Florida. If you have Florida.
The property taxes, the property taxes, if you have Florida, if you're a Florida resident, I believe you pay less. I know you pay less, I know you pay less on property there. Either way we go about it, either way we go about it, it might benefit some, might benefit some, even, even. I've got family who lives in Florida, who owns property here. But I also got people here that owns property in Florida. They don't like the, they don't like their property down there. The ones who are down there ain't gonna like, they pay more up here. But I'd definitely like to talk, I'd definitely like to talk to some people about it, some people about it.
So what's gonna happen, so what's gonna happen? It's gonna officially happen, it's gonna officially happen. Somebody, some board, it might not be ours, it's gonna have to rate taxes. It's gonna have to rate taxes. Because the cost of living is catching up. Because of the cost of living, it's catching up with us.
Because of the cost of living, it's catching up with us, and it's pushed us into that, and it's pushed us into that.
So to me, this would be, to me, this would be, put it on the local people's back.
Put it on the local people's back.
There'd be more tourists, there'd be more tourists.
And I always said, you know, when you look at taxes, you wanna try to make taxes, you wanna try to make it from here, it's not, not here.
Let the people that are here hit with the last, let the people that are here hit with the last.
So, so.
I, I think it's a good alternative, even if we don't lace, even if we don't, maybe we don't, maybe we look at it.
Maybe we look at it.
But again, the cost, the cost of living, the cost, the cost of living.
This county, this county going up.
It's going up.
And what's bad about it is, it ain't going up just for households, it's gonna go up for gap, because we're, we're having to.
Produce more services, produce more services.
Produce, let's talk about.
More, you know, we have more share, you know, we have more share.
And that's, and all of it right now, and all of it right now, is, is being spread out across the whole board.
Across the whole board, but it's not being used by most, not being used by most of them. So, to me, it's an alternative to, to me, it's an alternative.
Pass that along, be able to pass that along.
The best way we can, the best way we can.
But with that said, we don't, with that said, we don't wanna punish.
I mean, yes, you're, I mean, you're talking about still raising it up, there's still people getting hurt because it raises.
We don't necessarily have, we don't necessarily have, I think we have.
I don't think it's punishing, I don't think it's punishing when you do offer services.
If people want the services, if people understand that they have to pay for, that's one thing, but now, but now.
I believe they know that, I believe they know that.
Well, I don't believe they are doing, I believe they are doing.
I mean, I believe some don't want it, I believe some don't want it.
Some, some people know, some people know, some want services and wants to pay, but some people want services and don't want services.
Take like in Florida, take like in Florida, or some of them, or some of them.
These people are used to, these people are used to doing this, they're used to paying for services, they pay for services, they pay for services. Use them now sometimes, use them now sometimes. Charge them, so, and they come here, a lot of people, and they come here, a lot of people are.
Many people, they say, many people, they say.
I can't believe y'all's taxes, or eating evaluations, or eating evaluations, or. And I don't wanna put no burden, and I don't wanna put no burden, honestly, I don't, I mean, because, it's not what we're here to do.
But we are here to make a decision, it best benefits.
Taxpaying citizens, taxpaying citizens.
Slane County.
And I like this as a good way, and I like this as a good way, and it was.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I've heard, I've heard past, I've heard past boards, past members of the boards.
Questioning a, a way to raise taxes on the, raise taxes on homes.
Vacation, vacation homes.
We didn't have a way to do that.
We didn't have a way to do that.
This, this more or less is, this more or less is the way to do that.
To raise tax on vacation, tax on vacation homes.
And, and vacation properties.
And vacation properties and so on.
In the past, we have infired about that.
We have infired about that, and different people, and different, and different people, and so on, and so on.
This is that, to me, this is that, to me, that way to do it.
That way to do it, if we really want to do that, then this is how we would have to do it, there again, there again.
I would be in favor of it in that it would just, it would be a tool that a future board could use, if they solve it.
They wouldn't have to do it, they wouldn't have to do it, they'd be able to do it, they'd be able to get more money out of the secondary homes, of the secondary homes, in some vacation homes.
The rental properties and so on like that.
The rental properties and so on like that.
It would not be on primary homeowners.
Would not be on primary homeowners.
We, we've discussed that so much in the past, it seems like this, it's almost like, we've been chasing that car, we've been chasing that car, right here it is, if we wanna do it, this is how you do it.
It seems like this. Now, now.
This is how you do it.
Which is true, we've all talked about it, we've all talked about it, but we skipped over the, we're gonna raise your taxes to do this, to begin with.
It hurt for a little while, but it hurt for a little while.
See everything, see everything, a- and I'm coming, and I'm the agreement to, yeah, everybody that I wanted to help, I'm not helping. I understand that, I understand that.
We're all in with the tourism.
We're all in with the tourism, it comes with consequences.
We're all in, we're all in.
Lots of stuff, it all comes to consequences, nobody wants to talk about, everybody wants to talk about.
Every year, we do the same thing, but budget.
We talk about raising taxes, and raising taxes.
People say, well.
If you didn't have all this.
If you didn't have all this.
The citizens here would be paying this amount, they would be paying this amount.
No, 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 we, we've caused the citizens to have to pay this amount.
To pay this amount.
We, we've all went in for the tourism stuff, we're all.
Tourism stuff.
Done all this stuff too, and it has consequences, it has its evaluations, it causes evaluations to go up.
It has its evaluations.
People to sit down, you jump on the wagon, you jump on the wagon.
Bandwagon that, in the grand scheme of things, grand scheme of things.
What I wanted to try to do.
What I wanted to try to do.
Does not help anybody.
It does not help anybody.
Doesn't help, it doesn't help.
Talk about not having raised taxes, cause here again.
Not having raised taxes, cause here again.
We're talking about.
We want services and stuff, no matter how many people come here, we're talking about raising taxes.
We're talking about raising taxes.
I think we can have a record year, we can have a record year.
So what, we're still talking about raising taxes, talking about raising taxes.
To provide services.
And it, there's no end to that, there's no end to that.
Yeah, you're up, I mean, and then saying that, I mean, and then saying that.
Look where we're at now, look where we're at now.
We're gonna be in the next five, we're gonna be in the next ten years.
What I'm saying is, is this, this what we're doing here, this what we're doing here.
It's gonna help, help us, it's gonna help us in the next five, in the next five.
What we're doing now ain't helping, what we're doing now ain't helping, because we, we, we don't have it, we, we, we don't have it, we're, we're gonna be, we're, we're gonna be.
Sitting here in the same place, and sitting here in the same place.
Catching up, people gonna keep catching up, people gonna keep catching up.
And this ain't gonna stop it, and this ain't, and this ain't gonna help enough, and this ain't gonna help enough to keep somebody from saying, hey.
I'm gonna sell to you because.
Sell to you.
Cost of living is still going up here, and you got the money, paid the big dollars for the, you big dollars for this.
And there's so many people that here now, and these big houses now, and they'll be taking full advantage, they'll be taking full advantage of this too.
More people moved here.
Pick them up, you're gonna move here, you're gonna move here.
It's just.
When they all changed, when they all changed, residents to here, what do we wanna do? What good would that be, what good would that be?
Go to the nonprofit, go to the nonprofit.
It would be nothing but a target, nothing but a target.
We'd be down to, we're gonna be down to, we're gonna be down to, we're gonna have to raise taxes.
I don't know, the more I think about it, I don't know, the more I think about it, I don't know.
I don't see why you're out, I don't see why you're out.
Actually, like I said, helping the people, I wanted to help the people, I wanted to help, that's what I, that, that's what I, I can't look for this until I have some hearings and talk to more people.
To see if that's what they, to see if they understand, if they understand.
We'll do this, we'll do this.
It'll help you out, after the first, after the first, you're gonna have to get used to the higher, get used to the higher taxes, cause it is taxes, cause it is.
Taxes a little bit, taxes a little bit.
I mean, we're still gonna take insane amounts, take insane amounts, it's gonna raise.
It's going to raise their taxes, on their property.
The people that were hurt, the people that were hurt, if you had just a house, or if you had a piece of property, that's the people that it would hurt.
That's the people that it would hurt.
If you own, if you own ten houses, or ten houses, or a hundred acres, a hundred acres.
But it's also the affordability, but it's also the affordability, you do have the hundred acres, you do have the hundred acres.
Whatever they can afford, whatever they can afford.
But I guess it, it is for those, this is kind of another, this is kind of another tool that, the primary residence you get off.
Primary residence you get on, like, say, the house on, like, say, the house.
You're gonna become fifty thousand dollars off your bay.
Fifty thousand dollar off your bay.
Like, say, if you, if you are a big landowner, or if you own a bunch of stuff, then owning that, not the same, you still can get fifty, you still can get fifty.
But then you're gonna get taxed from other side, so it's gonna, even now, that's the, even now, that's the distribution.
For the foreign organization, for the foreign organization, we're not gonna have a tax, we're not gonna have a distribution tax.
It's gonna have to lose money.
It's the same way as a value, it's the same way as a value, that's the same way, that's why having to revow.
That's why having to revow.
A break even, you know, if you do a break even analysis, on, you know, when you reset the rate, you always have to, you always have to publish, whatever, you always have to publish.
The break even is, with the state.
The break even is, with the state, and to let people know, this is the break even, this is the break even, and then when you reset the rate, and then when you reset the rate.
But it's all shift, but it's all shift.
Can I bring this back around, can I bring this back around?
Full circle.
We got flown way out there a few times here.
That, what, what we're asking, or what this, what this would be, or what the motion would be, would just be to send this in.
We just be to send this in.
We're not even debating whether, we're not even debating, we're not even debating about, we're not even debating what it would cost, we're not, we're not doing anything.
This may be an option for future, I guess.
Boils down to that, boils down to that.
We sorted that off in the weeks now, about how it was now, about how it happened.
That'll be a future, that'll be a future, years or future more years, or future more years.
May never happen, may never happen.
This would just be, this would just be, this would just be an option for future boards, it'd be a, a, a tool in the, in the work chest, of, of, of.
A future boards.
If they needed to, if they needed to have a, an option, to have a, an option, so.
In saying that, are you making a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, we adopt this, uh, resolution to send in, for homestead, for homestead.
Need a second?
I'll say.
Need a second?
I'll say.
Someone in favor, please raise your right hand, someone in favor, please raise your right hand, all opposed, all opposed, pass three to two, pass three to two. Next, we're down to new business. You need new business, you need new business.
It's really old business, it's really old business.
It's new old business, it's new old business.
Everybody get, everybody get, done, done.
Cassidy's.
Email, email, about the park stuff, about the park stuff.
And I, I'd already forward it all out.
All that stuff that he had, that he said was his man, said was his man.
Everything he sent us, we forwarded on that.
So he'd already sent us, he'd already sent us all that.
And there's a lady, there's a lady, live just close to, live just close to Jesse Hems.
Yep, and we got, that's what we heard, got.
We got in touch with her.
We got in touch with her.
Had those things, had those things. I wanted to go back, I wanted to go back and ask some questions about the kudzu. Because on some issues, on some issues.
I mean, there's some things, we can do stuff about, some we're not, not be able to.
Did the state, did the state?
Government not bringing kudzu in here, did county bring it in?
County bring it in.
Put it on roads for erosion first.
For erosion first.
Or did the state, or did the state do that for the erosion?
Do that for the erosion.
Corps of Engineers.
The Corps of Engineers.
And so, to me, to me.
There should be a route, there should be a route, that the person who brought it here, and put it back, should help us clean it up.
And eradicate it the best we can, I don't think, there's no way to eradicate it.
And then making county, and then making county, there is lots of kudzu.
On around twenty-eight.
On around twenty-eight.
Oak Grove, there's a whole holler, there's a whole holler, full of kudzu.
Left-hand side of the road.
Left-hand side of the road.
I know for a fact it is, I know for a fact it is.
Cause the father owns property up there, and I see deer up there, and I see groundhogs in it too.
Groundhog.
I don't know what they did, I don't know what they did in making county.
But I do know there is kudzu, but I do know there is.
I was always told, I was always told that the government used it for me, used it for erosion.
And if they, and if they, if it was not the county, if it was not the county. Should have, should some way to help, some way to help try to get rid of the invasive, the invasive. It is a nuisance, a nuisance for lots of property in this county, and it, it does spread, it does spread pretty good too.
I don't know if it's accurate, I don't know if it's accurate, but I just looked it up, and I just looked it up, initially introduced, initially introduced, North American Service, and Civilian Conservation Corps. Noteen thirty's for the purpose, teen thirty's for the erosion, controlling soil erosion, so, 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 in the American Southwest.
So, so, maybe we can do resolutions for that.
Maybe we can do resolutions for that.
To try to get help for it, to try to get help for it, destroying people's state.
There was a gentleman at my riding stable, that worked at a, at a plant, that made a spray, that made chemicals for the state of North Carolina. Kill that, just kill that, just kill that. He was talking, he was talking, he said they had a spray, they had a spray, but it just kills top, but it just kills top, he says, no, it kills the roots, no, it kills the roots.
Really, we talked about it some, we talked about it some for the, the dump.
Yeah, we, we had, we got a company, we, we had, we got a company, that guaranteed, that it didn't cost us twenty grand, it didn't cost us twenty grand to get rid of it.
But did it hit you that, but did it hit you that?
Oh, yeah.
Did it?
Oh, yeah.
But even if it does, it can be carried, I know that there's, I know that there's some land, down on land and stuff, where it's been carried, where it's been carried. So, I mean, I don't know if we'll ever get it, I don't know if we'll ever get it.
Some of the big problem areas, especially around the roads, especially around the roads and stuff.
Might wanna re, might wanna reach out to some of the erosion patrol specialists, the engineers that we have here. Uh, they may have some alternative for it, but the thing about it is, if you do get rid of it, you're gonna create a lot of erosion.
Oh, yeah.
So we gotta go back or something?
Yeah, you gotta, it's gotta be reseeded with grass or something, I mean.
Well, they, when them fires happen, they reseeded that kinds of stuff, and certain, I mean, to an extent, you, you could spray hydro seed up to a spot, but, I mean.
And even soil and water might be able to help out with, with some answers to that.
Soil and water might, yeah.
I'll bring that up.
And I don't know, I called you earlier, but can we talk about that yet, no?
Probably not, I think, I think I would.
That would be under something like contract or something.
We're talking about different methodologies for the animal patrol facility, and the reason why it's taking so long, we're waiting on the town to move the water line, there's a water line right in our way. And so, for that, um, section up there, we can't move forward until they get that water line moved, and so that's what we're waiting on, on that piece of property. But there might be some other, other opportunities, that's what we're thinking, to partner, uh, with our local, uh, non-kill shelter. And, um, and try to figure out some, maybe a better way for people to, to be able to adopt, and instead of doing a, a fully kill shelter, we may wanna do a hybrid. So we can bring that up, you know, maybe at the sixteenth meeting, when we have the budget as well, uh, we'll, we'll maybe ready for that.
Good.
But that's basically where we're, where we're kinda heading toward.
Now, I have one more thing. Can we talk about the roller derby request? Cause we, it's not just them, we're gonna have to talk, we were, the rec park brought us a thing a while back also, about this requesting for the food truck. And I, we've not had anything brought back to us.
Right, and we've, we, I think we're just waiting, cause right now, we're gonna be in transition, if we build the new section on the front with the new bathrooms up the rec park. There's not really gonna be much space to put a foot direct for one, but in that whole mix, we're gonna decide, you know, while we were doing all that project, to put in enough power to maybe do a few of them, and one thing I would encourage y'all to look at, next time y'all are in Franklin, if you go by, um, past Chick-fil-A, up that road toward the Southwestern Community College. There's actually a food truck camp out there.
Yeah.
And food trucks, if they wanna park there, just come pop up, and it's a, and you can go up there and eat or whatever, and there's like, it's just off the side of the road, and it's a, a little place for food trucks, they've got the power and the water. And I think they pay somebody, it's a private deal, I reckon, it's not the, anything to the county, but, I mean, that was kinda interesting little concept there.
I've, I've seen it, it's down by, by the library.
Yeah, and, um, but there, it's a food truck, like camp or something, so, I mean, that may be an option, if you wanna do it, to have maybe a few things, but right now, I think we would be, if we did it, I don't know where they, where they'd do it at, you know.
Well, I wanted to talk about some pros and cons to it all, and get some discussion, cause we didn't really talk much about, cause there is a reason we passed the ordinance. Not to have the vendors and stuff, was because, and it was specifically at the time, it was because we had the rec park having the football games, and they were getting, uh, I believe Jim Brown told us two hundred dollars for the vendor that was there, that was doing more selling than they were, and the whole purpose was, and I asked Mr. Brown if he didn't think they would lost two hundred dollars worth of stuff out of the concession stand because they were there. And I believe they did, and we have other issues of competing for money. And just because it sounds great, and it's an opportunity for certain people, there's also things that goes with that, if we have something that the rec, recreation department, the county is going to haul the trash off and pick up the trash, correct? We will be responsible for all the trash, and there will be trash.
Oh, yeah.
There will be trash, and it is also, I mean, it, it could be a whole lot of trash, depending on how much, but we'll be picking up that, we'll be, there, there's reasons we need to talk about and stuff, and, I mean, I know it sounds good, let's do this, make some money, and they'll donate some money, is the donation's gonna, the donation gonna take up, I mean, is it gonna be more than, we're gonna have to hire more people to come up there and clean up more, it's gonna cost us more to clean up, it's gonna. Then, there was also the issue about, I think the rec department, the rec advisory committee was saying, well, we'll have forms, and you'll have to fill these forms out, and you'll have to do this, and we'll only pick from this group. The rec advisory committee was saying, well, we'll have forms, and you'll have to fill these forms out, and you'll have to do this, and we'll only pick from this group. And then I think that some people will get mad and aggravated, and they'll be, even they'll be aggravated about it, but, I mean, what do you?
I think the biggest, the biggest reason, or the biggest why you have to be, you know, really think about it, is you're, you're providing a public property. For a private business.
Right.
That, that's the whole deal, whether it be the snow cone up at the thing or whatever, and so, you know, you have to make it where it's, um. It's fair if you're gonna do that, that's why you have to open it to everybody.
To everybody.
But then you also have to put a fee on it, that, that's gonna make that space that they're renting, so they're renting a space really, a public property. They're renting public property for their business, that's what they're doing, right? We had this, an issue with a hot dog stand, it kept going up there and parking up there on the side of the road, which is county property, and we kept asking them to leave. And I think that's one, one of the reasons it came.
Was one of the reasons also.
Yeah, and so we finally said, you can't park, this is public property, you can't, you can't do that on public property, cause you're not like a nonprofit, settling it for a charity, or, or something like that. You're a for-profit business, and so that's the difference, and what you have to think about. When we were talking to the roller, you know, this, they were gonna do it, I don't know if it was a fundraiser, but still, the roller girls aren't a, they're for, I mean, they're just an organization. They're not a nonprofit, and so then you have, well, how's that work? And so we were like, you know, it's time, I mean, I think you should put it, anything, at least two hundred dollars a day, plus a percentage of profit or something. Cause you're, you know, y'all are the, the custodians of public property, you know, at the end of the day, and those people are gonna be using it for, for their own interest.
So, I'm, I'm the same way, I mean, I, I don't think we need to make money, we need to break even, or you know what I'm saying, for, you know, to where not.
Right.
But we do need to charge enough to make sure we always break even, or even on picking up the trash and all that good stuff, and then figure out what that is, and.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, cause, to me, it's not more of a money-making thing, it's more of a convenience for the people thing.
Right, well, it's just like the, you know, when we have up at the event park, and I know it's kinda different, but, but not, I'll guess, because we're, we're gonna have, you know, food trucks come up there. Because we don't have any concessions, and so, on the rodeo, for instance, they're coming up there, the, the food trucks will be there, they did, they were a lifestyle. And we're gonna have one at the end of the month, you know, same, same deal, um, I guess it needs to be something like that, we don't get anything directly off of it, cause it's their event. And they're trying to bring in, you know, for our local people, have an event where, where they, we can have it here, but, um, but if you're gonna do it. And we're gonna be the cust, you know, we're gonna be the event organizer, you need to make the fee as high as, as possible. I mean, cause on a, on a normal day, on a food truck, they may bring in fifteen hundred bucks, right? Uh, for an all-day event, depending on how many people's gonna be there.
But even with the event part, we have to maintain, and we have to.
Oh, yeah.
Do money, just TDA, do all the money maintaining and stuff for all that?
No, I mean.
Don't, then we probably need to be having a fee of some sort, even up there.
We, we charge a hundred dollars for the event right now, just trying to get it going, um, and that, that's low, I, a hundred percent. But I think in, in the future, when we get big enough, I think a five hundred dollar would be the fee we'd need to get, at least for the trash, you know, all, all the trash that. We have to take off and, and all that stuff, so, I mean, all of that needs to be talked about, and this, this food truck thing, even though it is private, I mean. Technically, they're, they're private companies, they don't, the rodeo don't get anything off of the food truck, they're just, they're just wanting them people there to, to help. You know, keep the, keep the people happy, basically, so I don't, I don't, it's an open-ended thing.
They're there to make money.
They're there to make money.
Right.
And they're using that, that crowd that we've, you know, got there as their customer.
And I wanna roll this right onto something else, I was setting this up the whole time. We used to have Fireman's Day, Fireman and Rescue Squad Day. And it was a big event when I was a young man, and I don't know what happened to it necessarily. Talked to some people, they said they, it sorta got, they ended up just being a vendor at an event. It wasn't Fireman's Day, Rescue Squad Day, but an event like that is something I would like to see, uh, event park or anywhere, where everybody up there. The whole purpose of that day would be for the Fireman and Rescue Squad stuff. And if you wanna participate, just know this is for this, and we need to, I mean, I'd like to see that come back. And I've mentioned it to some people, and some people's all said, said, yeah, they'd like to see it too, but then you're back to the, I can't get no volunteers to do this or that, and.
I believe that was Labor Day weekend, wasn't it?
It was, it's in town, right, that's.
Yeah, it was, it was in town.
I didn't know if the town, did the town, I know Briston City Fire Department had something to do with that at one time, and I didn't know if the town had something to do with that at one time.
It used to be Slane County Fire Department, didn't it, or was it always just?
Was it the chamber?
This one was just Briston City.
Briston, but everybody.
Was it the chamber that might have facilitated some of that?
They didn't get, all, all the other departments didn't get up part of the money, and I went to Briston City.
The chamber done it.
See, it, it was around so long.
That was conflict.
It, it was a long time before.
It was conflict.
Yeah.
Cause it wasn't, it wasn't fire.
Right, and Farmers Day was, was there before even the other ones were founded.
Right.
Cause they weren't founded till ninety-three.
Well, they were nice.
And then they started divvying up, um, cause it was there until, what, two thousand five or six? I wanna say, Farmers Day still happened, they moved it over the train one year.
Yeah.
And, and it's like any event, like, we look at River Fest, we used to have River Fest for like ever, and then it went away, you know, at Memorial Day Weekend. Uh, so I think the, uh, whether it be lack of volunteers or, or what, but I do think it was definitely founded by Briston City Fire Department. But, um, you know, we used to own trucks in Briston City too, so it's Slane County Fire Department and Briston City together kinda, but. But, uh, I think it was animosity between each one, each of the firemen, fire departments at the time, because, you know, without anything, it goes growing pains. And at the time, you know, the town is the board of the fire department, and so, when the other ones were founded. There was no, um, mechanism to join together and just make a nice family, and that's why you have the West, and you have Alarka. Because they weren't, they didn't work together, you know.
But now they seem like they're working more together.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a lot better.
It's a lot better.
Regardless, regardless of, of their positions or whatever, they always perform for the public, always.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they ever wanna do their job.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I just had that.
But, yeah, I, I'm like you, I mean, it'd be great to see that come back as an event, but that's gonna take a little spearheading to, to get that together.
Probably some work with the TDA and the town, and.
Mm-hmm, the chamber, and planning, you know, trying, trying to find the right opportunity to do that.
Yeah.
It was just an idea.
It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Any more new business? Uh, okay, move on to closed session, any closed session? Need a motion to adjourn.
Take one from you, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll say. I'm going to church.
Please raise your right hand, passing out, thank you guys.
Yeah, I'll come to church with you, we're about.